I'd like to call the meeting to order. If you could all stand for the pledge.
Please.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. Okay, thank you. I'm going to largely forego any comments. We are going to do a workshop at the close of what we hope will be a fairly short business meeting, which is not intended to cut off discussion among the board or comments from the public during the public comment section. But we'd like to try to get to the workshop as expeditiously as we can and hopefully have a good fruitful productive conversation about our STEAM offerings at the elementary, middle, and high school levels. And I'd also like to introduce Tanner Henon, sitting down to my right. Tanner has joined us as our other student representative, so thanks Tanner. And he's going to talk a little bit about himself during the student report section of the agenda. Okay, item 4.0, approve minutes from our September 23 meeting. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes? Motion by Lou, second by Alan. Any discussion, corrections, comments? You look okay to everybody, okay? Okay, so we have a motion, all those in favor of approving the minutes? Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Adjustments to the agenda. We have two adjustments to the agenda. Under new business, I'd like to, you have a request for a field trip, which Vita put on the table tonight, and I'd like to make that, that's an action item, I'd like to make that 11.2. And then we also have, need to have a discussion on our ELL program that Katie's going to lead. You got materials emailed to you about that enrollment and the need for discussion on adding some staff support there. So that'll also be an action item, and I'd like to make that 11.3. Anything else, Patrick? No?
What was 11.2?
11.2 is the field trip request. Okay, 6.0, this is our first public session. Anyone who has any questions or comments to make on items on the agenda? If not, thanks. 7.0, committee reports. Patrick, building project update?
So you received another detailed report from Kyler with photos. And just a few things, the second and third floor are now poured, the concrete is poured at 90 percent. So when we're giving tours now, people can walk up the stairs and go to the second and third floor. And once you get up there, it's much bigger than what you can see from Congress Street. Brickwork is being done on the east side, which is the side facing BMS of the building. And most of what you saw in your progress report is metal stud work and the sheathing. If you look up on the hill right now, it's a bright yellow color, and that's what I mean by that. They're still working on the bridge from Congress Street Inn, which will be happening all winter long. And a lot of the utilities are being installed right now and, you know, buried underneath the ground at this point right now. So we did give some recent tours, but we're kind of shutting those down because of the winter coming. But we had Rotary come, and we also had the full building committee come up for some detailed tours. So any questions you have about the progress? We're on budget right now, and our timeline is still December 15th of 2020.
Any questions of Patrick? No? Is there any particular, any critical milestone approaching that might cause us an issue? Everything seems to be on track. Material is available. Labor seems okay. Yep, okay, good, good. Thank you. Okay, 7.2, curriculum assessment. And Katie?
So I'm very quickly going to turn the microphone over to Monica Wright and Vince Chateau, who are two of our teachers and also middle school department heads for their areas at BMS. And they're going to be speaking about expeditionary learning projects for the curriculum update today.
There's some things on the screen over there. So thank you for having Vince and I to talk about expeditions at the middle school. And an expedition is a long-term, in-depth study that has students make authentic products and really lets them to make the standards relevant. It really makes the standards come alive. So I'm going to talk about the seventh grade expedition, because this is the one I'm a part of right now. And it's underway at the moment. Those pictures were taken last week. So our project, our expedition really has several community partners, which makes it part of its authentic, part of what makes us authentic. So the Kineback Gestory Land Trust, the Gulf of Maine Research Institute in Portland, the Maine Maritime Museum, Reed State Park, and then Popem Historical Site, and also the Ecology School, where students go in September for two nights in three days. I'm just going to hit a few highlights of this expedition. First, it's really well established. This expedition's been going on for seventh graders at BMS since 2013, which means every seventh grader has a common experience through curriculum before they head up to the high school. And one of the things I'm really proud of is that as we've fine tuned it and gotten better, there is a middle school science journal out of the Gulf of Maine Research Institute. And students are submitting their research papers of the green crab trap data. Those are peer reviewed by other middle school students across the state. And then in return, our students peer review their science research papers. From that selection process, a few get published in the journal. It's gotten stronger as we fine tuned it. These are photos of the Maine Maritime Museum that were taken today. And this year, the project was also selected as an exemplar through the Maine Mass Science Alliance as a, as part of their census of community-based environmental learning. And that's going to be used as a model for other schools across the state. We always try to tweak it, make it a little better every year. So at Adele Carter's ELA classes, she's underway having students as part of Shark Tank, and they are designing prototypes and business plans for their ocean sustainability product or innovative design. In December, we'll be looking for judges of these prototypes and business plans, of course. And just wanted to put that out there, something new that we're trying. And we're going to close our expedition in December with our celebration of all the learning. And that will be in here on December 20th, and you guys are all welcome to come.
Hi, folks. My name's Vince Chateau. I teach social studies at the eighth grade level. Now, Monica discussed a well-established expedendiary learning program that has, as she said, has been around for over six years. One of the things I'm going to talk about today is an expedition that's just getting started. It's at the ground level. And what this means is that there's a lot of growth that we're expecting to happen once this expedition gets started. So they don't start out this way. They have to grow, and they have to, by trial and error and adding new things to it, we get something that is up to this standard. But it needs to start somewhere. And so the one that we're looking at in eighth grade right now at the Baxter House, I guess you could kind of call a pilot in a way. And that is the expedition called Citizen U. One of the curriculum pieces in social studies for eighth grade is civics and government. And what we realized was that in order to truly understand civics and government, you had to understand what citizenship is and what a citizen is. And so that's what we're delving into right now with our eighth graders. How does, how does citizenship impact a community? And we're talking about what a community is. It can be a school community, it can be your home community, or your town, et cetera, et cetera. So what we are discovering right now is that there are five themes of citizenship: respect, compassion, honesty, fulfilling responsibility, and guts. And so we're delving into those and looking to see what they mean when it comes to a community. And as an anchor text, we're using the book Seed Folks. Now, some of you may know this book. And if you don't, it's a wonderful book by Paul Fleishman, which delves into this community that becomes a community through a community garden. And these unique characters come out and show these themes of citizenship through it. So like I said, we're delving into what that means. So students now are taking on a project with one of the themes, and our culminating activity, I guess you could say, will be a citizenship wall of the five themes right behind you in front of the music room, which will explain to our school community what each of those elements of citizenship means. And again, this is at the basic level. So we need to try them out, see what works, see what doesn't work, and then next year, build on it from there. As far as community members involved in this, that is definitely a piece of it, something that we'll be looking at for the next time we do it. So you get a slice of one that's very well established and one that's just at the beginning. Thank you.
What was, what was the book again that you were?
Seed Folks. Seed Folks. Paul Fleishman. Years ago, I do remember the elementary school using this in an ELA situation, but I love to use books that are from, from elementary level at social studies because they're accessible to everybody. And what I get out of this for social studies is not anything as far as reading is concerned. And so, and kids, accessible, easy to, easy to read for most kids, but they're getting the point out of it. That's what I love to do with social studies. This is in conjunction with ELA. The ELA teacher is doing some things with this while I do the social studies end of things.
Thanks. Do we have questions?
Monica, what, the Ecology School, is that the, I'm trying to remember, Ferry Beach is something else, right? Did we switch?
Ferry Beach changed names, so same organization, new name.
Oh, same organization, okay. So they just call themselves the Ecology School now?
Right. Because we went to Poland in September, and they're moving to their permanent site in Saco, hopefully next year.
Oh, okay, because they were redoing, okay.
Any other, Jen?
Monica, and also for both of you, you touched on interdisciplinary accessibility to these things. So it'd be interesting to hear from both, especially from the ecology one, how that touches on other topics, as well as maybe how it might kind of touch like somebody in a STEM or STEAM capacity.
My, the expedition I'm part of right now is centered around science, and then the Shark Tank is really an engineering task, where students are explaining, building their prototypes for a particular way of solving ocean sustainability issues. The part I work with is building, you know, writing a science research paper and submitting it. And then today, the technology wise, is we're doing a ton of data analyzing with, through spreadsheets. And Bob Jordan, our technology integrator, was there helping me, making sure that people knew what to do. Is that enough of an answer?
Thank you.
Any other questions? I just have, just more of a general, is civics is really not part of our curriculum anymore, is it?
It is as far as what's being studied in Bath, at Bath Middle School. So we had an opportunity to offer social studies as a self-contained content area at Bath Middle School, which it hadn't been for a while. It was under Humanities. Thank you very much, School Board, for doing that. Thank you. So that is part of a content area that we're looking into.
They're talking about the responsibilities that the individual has as part of a civic organization or civic community.
Correct. And, and one of the key programs that I'm using in there is an online program called iCivics, put out by Sandra Day O'Connor, actually. She was the one that helped develop it. So, yeah, it's, one of the things that we saw as a need was for students to have more of an understandings of how the government works, what citizenship means, and how civic organizations work.
Yeah. Okay, thanks. Any, any other questions?
I just have a logistical question. So I know you guys rotate with the seventh to eighth. So how does that affect expeditions? So when you're then in the eighth grade, again, is someone else doing the same expedition in the seventh, or how has that been working?
We can, I can speak to that as well, because our, our wing, Monica and I are in different wings. So we're on opposite sides, right? So it, this, especially this one, stays, stays the same as far as going from one seventh grade to the next. So the seventh grade science teachers next year, which will be our houses, will also be doing this as well.
Okay.
Yeah, this is, this is really a sustained part of the, part of the science curriculum, basically. And expeditions hopefully grow into that as, as they, as they grow and mature.
Right, and so you plan to do the same thing with the eighth grade civics? I was just wondering, because I know there's always, you know, there's always nuances from each house that's developed over the years, and so.
Yeah, and it, and it depends. I mean, not every expedition that you put together is one that, that is necessarily going to flow. And that's, that's why you need to try it out. Does it work? Does it make sense for that particular group of kids or for long term?
Right. Great, thank you so much.
Thank you both. So this is just another great highlight of something a little bit more in depth that we'll do each month during this time to show some of the high-level engagement and authentic activities that our teachers and students are involved in, rather than all of you having to listen to me give an update. And next month, we will be hearing from our librarians on the programming that they do in our district. Okay? I think that's it.
Thanks, Katie. Okay, item 8.0. We do have our two student reps here tonight, Hayden and Tanner. So Hayden, you want to say any good words on the beginning of the year?
So it's been pretty busy at school lately. I know a majority of the seniors, including myself, have been finalizing or wrapping up their college applications, and they're sending them out relatively soon. I believe that all of the fall sports are beginning to wrap up, with cross-country having regionals this past weekend on Saturday, and sending, I think, one student from the girls' team and then three students from the boys' teams to states or champion, like the championship. And I know that boys' and girls' soccer had their playoff games last week as well. Some other highlights from the past few weeks have been things such as the teen library, teen library council haunted house, which happened actually last night from four to about 10:00 PM. And myself and a group of probably 40 students that are associated with the library and others that just wanted to volunteer put on a haunted house with the Freemasonic Temple, or Freemasons. And then another highlight would have been the Playwright Festival, where four students got to write and produce their own theater works and projects, and that happened Friday and Saturday night.
Thanks, Hayden. Tanner?
I haven't prepared anything with tonight being my first meeting, so I'm just going to do a brief introduction. I am a junior at Morse, and I, I went to Woolwich Central School, and I'm a student athlete on the varsity golf team. I'm extremely thankful for this opportunity and excited to be here and a little nervous, if you can't tell.
Thanks, Tanner. Hopefully we won't disappoint you. Now you're on, you're on the golf team. Now I know why Patrick, or why the superintendent is so enthusiastic about your being here. Jen?
I just want to compliment Hayden. That was a wonderful update that you just did. You always bring such good news about the schools from your perspective, and it's really nice to have your voice here, and it's nice to have such a thorough report. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any, any questions of either student rep? No? Okay, thanks to both of you. Superintendent's report. Patrick?
So I'll be brief, just looking at the timeframe, because I know some people walked in, you know, just recently for the workshop, and I'm even going to put on my glasses for this one. At the elementary level, I just want to give you an overview of the Professional Development Day that we had. The focus was on the Fontis and Pennell reading curriculum that we spent a lot of local money on last year in the budget, and it's been very well received. At the middle level and high school level, a lot of it was on proficiency-based learning. And then BRCTC went to a statewide technology conference. And the upcoming November PD Day is really all focused on building trauma-informed schools. Next, this happens to be mostly focused on the secondary level, I apologize for that, but I'm happy to announce that we've started a unified volleyball team at Morse High School to complement, to go along with our unified basketball team. So we're creating a schedule right now, but we have plenty of participants. Morse senior Gavin Hannah was recognized by the city of Bath at this year's Citizen Involvement Day. Gavin raised around $1,800 to support the Bath Food Pantry this summer through persistent bottle drives. So congratulations to him. And lastly, I am going to mention the names on this, so bear with me, but we do take a lot of pride in our advanced placement testing and for students that get recognized for that. So the College Board recognizes several levels of achievement based on scores and performance on AP exams. So at Morse, we had four students that qualified for AP Scholar with Distinction by earning an average score of at least 3.5 on all AP exams taken. And again, they run from one to five, if you're not familiar. And scores of three or higher, I'm sorry, three or higher on five or more of these exams. And these students were Sarah Berkowitz, Arius Ike, Ella Martin, and Laurel Swanson. We had 10 students that qualified for AP Scholar with Honor Award by earning an average score of at least 3.25 on all AP exams taken, and scores of three or higher on four or more of these exams. These students were Emily Adams, Owen Barter, Elsa Bertelsman, Corey Klein, Caden Malcolm, Rachel Aulet, Lorelei Pryor, Elizabeth Shotten, Abigail Schreeden, and Thomas Trundy. And then we had 20 students qualified for AP Scholar Award by completing three or more AP exams with scores of three or higher. And these scholars are Rosa Atienza, William Carrollton, Griffin Dever, Abigail Dergan, Helena Ike, Ariah French, I apologize, Hannah Goodman, Echo Griggs, Alden Harkins, Madeline Jones Cressy, Zachary Lay, Sydney McCarron, Emily Minnet, Hayden Platter, Ryan Reed, Emma Roth Wells, Tyler Scorfina, Penelope Shields, Aidan Sinclair, and Zoe Shreeden. So just, this is a lot of hard work. Usually starts in 10th grade for a lot of these students. I would just like to congratulate them on their hard work and also their impressive academic performance. And that's it.
Thanks, Patrick. Yeah, that's great news on, on those AP scores and great news on the unified volleyball, too. I think that's, that, that program has been extremely successful and glad to see it expand. Deb, financial report?
Just a comment on the unified volleyball, too, that we did have a grant come through for that. So that's starting to help pay for this year anyways. So tonight, we're looking at the end of September for our financial report. September, we are now in the full swing for paying all salaries and benefits. July and August were July and August payrolls, and now September will include teachers and ed techs who fall under a September contract. So out of our almost $34 million budget, at the end of September, we have spent $4.7 million. And the cost centers, once again, we'll see operation and maintenance a little bit higher than the others because of all the summer work that was done this summer. 100% has been transferred over for food service, and that's just an annual thing that we do at this time of year to go into that separate fund. We've brought in $7.4 million in revenues, which is 22%. And once again, it's in line with what we spend and receive annually. As far as Morse High School project, we've spent 31% of that. So for $23 million out of the $75 million budget. Any questions?
Okay, thanks, Deb. Any questions for Deb? I know last year, or we ended the year with a, with a shortage in the special ed tuition line from last, previous year. Any sense or indication how, based on demand or need, how we might end up on that line this year?
It's early to say right now. I mean, but now is the time when I'll start looking at budget versus actual for tuition and as well as salary and benefits. We'll encumber all those salaries probably in November. But, you know, hopefully everything goes as planned and, and it's, right now, I haven't heard that we're in a dire situation at this point. The auditors are with us this week, so we'll find, we'll have the finals for the 18, 19 in January.
Okay, thanks, Deb. Any questions? No? Okay, thank you. Okay, under 10.0, old business. We have our 19, 20 goals. Jen, you want to speak to that?
Just very, very briefly, because I can see that we are continuing to address goal 1.2, which is in regards to our construction and building monitoring. And I can see that we are addressing item two, which is a communications goal with the additional staff that we've had and the number of press releases and communication and assistance that, that our schools have been given. So I think we're right on track with those two goals.
Thanks, Jen. And the members of the board should know, you did get in your packet a, a report, a monthly report from our, the communications specialist, Leslie, who's Lindsay, I'm sorry, Lindsay, who's working with us. So we hope to get those right along to help us keep track of how that communications goal is, is going. 11.0, new business. So we have first reading on three policies. So no actions required, but any, any comments? 11.1A, DJH, purchasing and contracting procurement? Any questions? The way I, the way I read this, the superintendent has the ability to make a final determination of whether there's any conflict. This, this pertains primarily to conflict of interest of staff. So one, one question I had on, over on the backside, dispute resolution. This, this language would apply to any, any, any issue raised by a bidder or respondent to an RFP, not, not just in the context of a conflict of interest, right? So. of a conflict of interest, right? So, okay. 11.1B is class size and there was some discussion on this policy in the Policy Committee. So, I'm gonna ask Jen and Anita just to address the change there.
Yeah, we just brought this subject up to the Policy Committee last month in response to some comments that were, came, that came about during a parent meeting at the Woolwich School last year. A parent had raised, just simply raised the question whether or not we should consider the composition of the classroom behaviorally, the emotional needs of the students in the room, things like that, in addition to just class size, whether or not we add staff to that classroom. So, we wanted to make sure that that was addressed in our policy. So, we looked at it and we added some language around that. But this is just a first reading, so if anybody has any input or suggestion around that language change or thoughts on that, we're still open to that conversation. Welcome to attend our meetings anytime as well, too.
Thanks. Thanks, Anita. Any comments on that from the board?
No.
And the third policy is I-I-K-E on promotion, retention, and acceleration of students. Any questions, comments? I do, in paragraph or section B, again, on the other side under retention, it says that parents should be notified as early as possible in the event that retention is being considered. And I would just change that to shall. And I wonder if by limiting this, the language limits it to parents, what does that do for guardians or other adults who have responsibilities, legal responsibilities vis-à-vis this kid? And parent shows up at least three times in, twice in B and then again in C. And I think that probably should be expanded to include others. Any other comments from the board? No? Okay. So, that was first reading, so we'll take these as action items at our next board meeting. So, any, if you have any questions and get them to Jen and Anita before our next board meeting. Okay. So, we have those two other action items. 11.2, we have a field trip request from BRCTC and it's a trip to Boston, a college tour at Mass Art and Wentworth Academy, Wentworth Institute. Any questions? I have a motion.
To move, approve.
A motion to approve, second by Lou. All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. And we'll need some discussion on this one. 11.3, ELL. Katie?
So, the two papers that the board members are receiving, that's, those are the two documents that Patrick sent out over email. I just wanted you to have them in front of you in case you didn't print those since they weren't. I don't believe they were in your board packet. Before I go through my exclamation, just so we orient ourselves with these two documents, the first side that says ELL programming data, this is a version updated now of the document you saw last year during budget season. That at the bottom shows our caseloads for ELL students in September and June of the past several years. On the top are some surrounding districts and what their ELL numbers look like as well as their staffing. Just a reminder of the two categories that we often talk about with students on a caseload would be newcomers who would be having zero to three years in this country. And then LEP or limited English proficient would be those with four and beyond. Okay? So, those are some of the terms we might be talking about. As you can see, so actually, let's flip it over. The back of this document, estimated minutes for various levels of either newcomers or limited English proficient students are on the back. And we did a comparison of Lewiston, Lewiston Portland obviously have the most students in these populations. And so, I just did that as a comparison of, you know, a totally different scenario where they have some full immersion programs, which we are not looking into, but just so you get a sense of their minutes of instruction that they're delivering to students. The middle column is what we're currently able to do. And then the right column is really what we are shooting for that's recommended, which is 150 minutes regardless of the group, which is essentially 30 instructional minutes a day, five days a week, for students to be able to access their education. So, keeping that in mind, the reason for my request to add an ed tech 2 to our ELL program is that, as you can see, between when we made the budget and had nineteen, is it working? Yep. When we created this budget and had 19 students across our five buildings, we, when I wrote this last week, had 24. We now have 26 as of today. And so, if you are looking at the instructional minutes page and do some quick math, roughly in a teacher's day, they have 1,600 instructional minutes that don't include their lunch planning period and a little bit of travel time, especially for this position because it's in five places. And so, if you included the 24 students, essentially at the very bottom, you can see that we very much to cover the ideal number of minutes for our then 24 students would be two full-time people. So, hopefully my math in this comparison makes sense. And given that the numbers have already increased, like I said in my email bullet points, we're never quite sure. Numbers fluctuate like they do as people move in and out. They could be four students less in a month. We're never quite sure. But to me, to make sure we are allowing students to access their education, we very much should be looking carefully at adding another position and just weren't aware at the time of creating the budget that we would have such an influx. So, questions?
Sure. Thanks, Katie. Questions for Katie? You did advise us, we were sensitive to this issue in last year when we, well, actually earlier this year in the spring when we were putting the budget together. So, I don't think, I don't think this comes as a particular surprise to us.
Right.
Well, it doesn't come to a surprise that the number is higher than what it was projected initially, but is this, does demand outstrip even two folks? I mean, potentially, could it even outstrip?
Not right now, but yes. If the numbers keep growing as they have been, especially if you look at the comparison by year, I mean, in 2017 and 2018, we had two students to start the year and now we have 26. So, that increase, we haven't seen a slowdown at all.
Okay. Any question? You know, it might be interesting at some point, you know, to, as you've been doing these additional presentations as part of the curriculum and assessment portion of the budget, to have the ELL instructor come in.
I love that idea. Yeah.
And talk about what that process is. I mean, you know, teaching folks who, teaching folks how to, you know, function who don't even have, aren't, might not, might not even be literate in their primary language. It's an interesting, it's an interesting pedagogical, you know?
It is.
Nut to crack. And I think it might be interesting to hear.
Great. I will add Sarah to the list. That's a great idea.
Yeah. Okay.
Any other questions?
My only other question, and maybe it's a Deb or Patrick question, is money. I mean, where is this in the budget?
Well, it's obviously not in the budget. That's why we're asking you for permission. But I would say that we did not fill Phippsburg pre-K ed tech position because we had that position filled at the beginning of the year. However, we only had four students enroll in that program. So, we have, you know, shifted that person into a different position. So, there was cost savings there. So, we would apply that staffing money to this position.
Thanks, Patrick.
So, do we need a motion?
We would need a motion to authorize the hiring.
To authorize us to hire an ed tech 2 for ELL? And is that a?
Make it?
Yeah. All right. So, I'll move to that we allow, we allow RSU One to hire an ed tech 2. Is that what it is?
Yeah.
Ed tech 2 for the ELL.
With feedback.
With feedback, right.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Second by Alan. Motion by Lou, second by Alan. Any further discussion? This is something I think we need to do, but.
What is the actual cost?
Thirty-five thousand with salary and benefits.
Any other questions? No? Okay. All in favor? Any opposed? No? Thank you. Thanks. Thanks, Katie.
Thank you so much. I'm really happy for this teacher and for the students. That's great. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. 12.0, public comment. Anybody have any questions, comments from the public? Anything that you choose to raise? No? Thank you. 13.0, set the next meeting and the date. We have a scheduled meeting November 25th at the middle school, 6 o'clock. Okay. We are now going to, we're going to exit from the general session. We're not going to adjourn, but we will exit from the general session to our workshop. And the focus of the workshop tonight is going to be on the elementary, middle school, and high school discussion of the STEAM program and how it applies to those kids, what our kids get out of it, whether all kids are able to take advantage of it. This is the first of what I hope will be a series of workshops. We're not necessarily going to do one every month, but a series of workshops on topics to be determined. So, if board members have specific issues they would like to discuss as part of a workshop, if folks in the community have particular issues and concerns that they would like to raise as part of a workshop with us, then you should do that. You can get those ideas, those thoughts to either Patrick or you can talk to individual board members and we can carry that, carry that forward. So, the intent here is not to have the board sit in front of you, but to have you, have an opportunity for you to engage the board and the board to engage you as members of a broader community focused on the RSU and the kids of the RSU. So, it's gonna be an informal format, hopefully with some give and take and hopefully with some ideas that we might explore at a later point and at some future point. So, Katie, go ahead.
Okay. So, tonight's topic for our first board workshop, as was said before, is STEAM enrichment in RSU One. I'm so excited that there are so many people here for the discussion. So, for those of you who don't know what the acronym STEAM means, you can see it's listed right up there, Science, Technology, Engineering, Art, and Math. So, I'm going to take you through a couple of slides about the format for tonight and the purpose. Then we will have some of our principals present information about what's happening at each level. And then we're actually all going to count off by numbers. Some of you probably haven't done that in a long time. And get into groups to have smaller discussions around some guided questions to generate some ideas around this topic and some feedback. Okay? So, let's get started. So, first, because this is our first crack at this, the board does need to set some norms to make sure that this is a productive discussion and sort of follows the protocol and a set of manners that they're interested in, making sure that we all carry out. And so, I just have five bullet points listed up here that are currently blank. And we won't need to do this at the future discussions. We'll just post what we've already selected from here on out. But if board members would like to take a minute to determine what norms you would like to make sure are followed during each of these sessions, we're going to do that right now. And I'll type.
This is participatory?
Oh, we're starting. It's happening. Okay. Go right ahead.
Any thoughts about outcomes? How you think this session needs to be, should be conducted to get, to get the most out of it? I mean, for me, I would, I would just like to, you know, I'm hopeful that we'll get a good conversation among the participants and involving the board in, as, as a resource as much as anything. I mean, one thing that I've always not liked about this, this process is that there's a distance between us and the community and the audience. And I'd like to see the board interact with those, with those individuals here.
Excellent. So, I'm gonna summarize that as all are encouraged to participate. Would anybody else like to share a norm that they'd like everyone to follow? We don't need to have five if there aren't five. Our students probably have done this a couple times. I see you eyeing me like, should I participate? You should.
So, I believe an important one in cooperation and teamwork would be all ideas should be thoroughly discussed and at least respected, even if you don't agree with it or don't think it's important to the topic at hand.
Perfect. Thank you.
Should we have a norm about reporting out? That we will be able to take what we learn here and communicate it back to the community?
Think of the wording on that while you move to the next one if there are any others.
I think it's helpful to have something like constructive criticism or criticisms or, you know, I don't know how to phrase this exactly, but feedback that's focused on the topic. If there's feedback on other issues, we can find another platform for those. And I think that's important to hear all feedback. But we should be able to, I don't know. Can you word smith that one?
Okay. Any other ones?
I like the constructive comment. This, these are, you know, hopefully, hopefully what we come away with in these workshops is a roadmap moving, to move forward.
Can I add the fifth?
Sure.
So, speaking one at a time, I know it sounds simple, but it's important. Um, so speaking one at a time, I know it sounds simple, but it's important. Okay, so, board members, can we all agree to these? Any comments before we move on? All right. So, um, I will fix the wording of these when I have more time, but they'll roughly say this moving forward. Thank you. Okay, the purpose of tonight, um, is to do actually just what we talked about in, um, the norm setting, to provide feedback, both posical, positive and critical about the topic of STEAM. Um, and also, as Steve was speaking about before, to make sure that we're having, um, some strong and authentic community conversations, and it's not just the board, um, speaking to the camera. So I'm going to have Eric Varney come up, our high school principal. He's going to share this slide, and then Brandon Ward, our middle school principal, will do the next, and then finally Sandra Gorsuch Plummer will do the third. Um, so we have all pre-K to twelve represented. For, for folks who are listening, there's, um, a moment after these three slides to ask clarifying questions. So I just ask, let them get through all of their, um, material, and then absolutely write your question down, and you can ask it right at the end, before we move into groups.
Thank you, Katie. Again, Eric Varney, principal at Morris High School, and I'm, I'm going to just speak very briefly about, uh, the secondary level. So that would obviously be Morris High School as well as, um, our technical education, BRCTC. Some, we, I could go on for a long time, but just to, to be brief, our, I think top on the list are, are investment in our elective classes. And it starts off with, uh, with science, and we have a lot of teachers who have a passion and, and former, um, employment in many cases, um, in specific topics in science. And so you can see the list there, marine science, computer science, vertebrate zoology, forensics, and we could go on. So we have a pretty robust, uh, group of electives that are targeted at STEAM areas. Also in art, in art, we have a teacher who offers, um, quite a few electives in ceramics, uh, two-D, three-D design, uh, photo, graphic design, and so on. We've talked a little bit tonight about our AP courses. In math, we have, um, w- we have statistics as, as well as calculus. At the, in science, we have computer science, uh, chemistry when we can field a cohort, biology, environmental science, um, and computer science, which is new. We have a, a program that was started a few years back, um, that is our STEAM Academy, and it has actually a differentiated diploma. So if students, um, meet a certain level of, um, of opportunities that they have, whether it's, uh, job shadows or, uh, internships, reaching a certain number of courses, um, then they'll get an actual endorse, a STEAM endorsement on their Morris High School diploma, which is pretty exciting. We had our first group, uh, receive that last year. We have a program that's new at BRCTC last year, was very successful, uh, for incoming ninth and tenth grade students. And, uh, it was the summer bridge program where students have an opportunity to have a CTE experience in the summertime. One of those, and that continues through the year, is, uh, engineering and architectural design program, which is open to, uh, students and is taken advantage of, where, um, they have pretty intense experience with, um, that area of, of, uh, of STEAM. Many informal clubs, Makerspace Club, uh, Green Club, then some competition clubs like Ocean Bowl and, uh, and math team, and we could go on in, in that area. And our students are taking advantage of, and it's particularly true this year, um, a huge involvement in CTE program. And many of those programs, uh, whether it's graphic design, um, or some of the hard trades, really, uh, narrows down on a specific area of STEAM experience. And in one of those programs, our graphic design program, has a lot of what she calls live work, uh, which is opportunities within the community, uh, to, to work with in actual, um, businesses or nonprofits where they can use their skills with those community partnerships. So I said I would be brief, so I hope I kept my promise, and I'll move on to the middle school level.
Thank you, Eric. Uh, so I'm Brandon Ward, and I'm the middle school principal at, uh, Bath Middle School, and I'm speaking on behalf of myself and Jason Libby at, uh, Woolwich Central Schools Middle School. So, uh, unlike the high school, we don't have a lot of electives. Uh, many of our opportunities are done at grade level, and then there are a couple of after-school opportunities. Lego Robotics is one of those after-school opportunities where, uh, you have, I think up to twelve to fourteen students can participate. If you haven't seen Lego Robotics, I highly encourage you to come out. We do have two meets over the course of the year. One is like an Olympic-style thing where they do fastest robot. They have a competition for who can clear a table of cans the fastest. And then in the spring, we have a sumo robot competition where they're trying to push each other out of a ring. And this is all programming and builds done by students. Uh, the Makerspace is a combination of visual and industrial art that happens at the eighth grade level, and that's something that is new as of this year. Many of you are probably familiar with FLOW, our fundamental learning on water, eighth grade trips to Chonki, which while the main focus may be the outdoor education part, um, there is a large art aspect to both the Woolwich and Bath Middle School trips. The Ecology School is a seventh grade experience. Monica, if you were here for the first part of the board meeting, alluded a little bit to what takes place there. Chonki Science Camp, which is a sixth grade experience. Discovery Boat Building Program at Maine Maritime. Uh, both schools also work with the Kennebec Estuary Land Trust, KELT. Two areas of focus are on invasive species and also sea level rise. Both schools do a lot of work with the Maine Maritime Museum. Artifact analysis and fishing technology have kind of a science bent to them, and then the evolution of the cod fishery and historic fishing vessel is more of a humanities-based. Uh, both schools have math teams, and similar to Lego Robotics, this tends to be after-school, and could in theory be limited by size, but I believe all students that try out for the math teams are able to participate. And then lastly, we have our expedition work. These happen at each grade level, and at least one of them every year has a science-based focus, and all of them incorporate art in, in some manner. Uh, and so that's it for the middle school, and so pass it off to elementary.
Thank you, Brandon. Brought my colleagues with me. What we did when we went through our, um, slide is we tried to include things that were in at least more than one school. So most of this you'll see happens at either Fisher Mitchell, Dyke Newell, Phippsburg, Woolwich, and all, a variety of combinations. So we have our B-bots in, uh, a few of our schools, and I believe those were purchased through a grant. You'll see we have broken ours up in two columns. A lot of what we do with, um, our STEAM activity is a result of our partnerships, our outside partnerships. Uh, we all have our three-D printers, and we have been doing some work in getting those up and running. We do not have Lego Robotics at Phippsburg. We do have Mystery Science in all of our schools. I believe that Dyke Newell and Woolwich are piloting the go-to science this year. Outdoor Classroom is, uh, getting up and running at Woolwich and going very well in Phippsburg. And as always, our, our friends at Dyke Newell and Fisher Mitchell, the teachers there are invited to come over and use either classroom at any time they would like to avail themselves to it. So all, all of our students are exposed to art and music weekly and participate in concerts and art shows. We have Odyssey of the Mind in a couple of our schools. Math team, strong in most schools. Garden Club takes place after school, and your hip-hop dance after school as well. And, uh, raising butterflies and hatching chickens. Uh, the chickens, uh, we do that in kindergarten. Again, a lot of times it's very successful, and sometimes it's not as success, as successful as we would like it to be. We're very, uh, pleased with our partnership with Maine Maritime, with, um, second and fourth grade participating in field trips and learning experiences there. We take several field trips, uh, one of them being, uh, Portland Players. And again, as I mentioned before, our partnership with, um, KELT, the Phippsburg Land Trust, Chonki is very big in our school, Maine Maritime Museum, Gulf of Maine Research Institute, where all our fifth graders have the opportunities to take a trip there. And again, um, we couldn't do it without our parent groups that help us with the, uh, Science Night and the Makers Fair. So we have a very active community, and we are, feel that we're going in the right direction.
Okay, so before we break up and talk about all this information, are there any, any clarifying questions that anyone would like to ask for the, the good of the whole? Yes, Nicole? I don't know the answer to that.
I could speak at the high school level. It depends on the club and how. Yeah, the, the question was whether s- faculty or staff are paid, or, or people from the community are paid to offer those after-school clubs. And I can say at the secondary level, it does depend on the establishment of the club and, um, uh, what the involvement is. Some of them less, less formal, no, and then some of them that are, um, uh, you know, meet weekly, and it's more intensive, they, they are, so. Same at the middle school as well.
Other questions? Okay, anything from the board before we move and discuss in more detail? All right, great. So, um, we have two overarching questions that we are going to discuss in small groups. Um, they're posted here on the board. Essentially, it's positive and critical feedback for what we currently have established, and then any thoughts and, um, brainstorms on what else we should be considering as a district for our STEAM enrichment, um, since it is such a highlight of RSU One. Um, so what we're going to do is there are going to be, there's going to be a note taker who will be on a laptop, um, in each of the groups. We were going to do four groups, but, um, since so many people are here, I'm going to have us count off by five, um, and I'll sit with a group as well. And so I think we'll just quickly pause. If you could start having people count over here, one through five, and I'll start over here, and then I'm going to assign where each group will go. Okay? So this will just be a second. Hopefully, we're all ready to share, um, some of these good conversations. Make sure my, my group is behaving. Um, okay, so why don't we just go one, two, three, four, five in order, um, and share the, you know, two things that were the main highlights for everybody? I'm going to hand the microphone so we can hear you.
We took our three minutes to just continue, uh, talking about it, so I'll, I'll, I'll work on the fly here. I think most importantly, uh, we felt as though, um, ex- having experiential aspects to education is important no matter what it is, and I think STEAM lends itself well to that. But, um, whether it's in the arts or, or, um, in the science side, or, um, or we, you know, in tech, in, uh, CTE, the, when we see the fire lit under a student, it's usually because there's an experiential aspect to that, and that's the, the, um, magic to that. And we also talked a fair bit about using arts as the platform in which to deliver other aspects of instruction. And, um, just a few spots of where we're starting that, and there's a lot of growth in that area, so.
Thank you. So, uh, I'm in the rule-breaking group. We couldn't narrow it down past three. First, uh, the need to expand at the elementary level, hook kids early, and devote more resources there. Uh, remember to emphasize all parts of STEAM. Sometimes art and math get lost behind the science. And then we recognize that we have a lot that's going on, and many people just may not be aware of it, so we need to highlight our existing opportunities.
Thank you for breaking the rules, because we did as well. We came up with three. Uh, our first is a positive that we provide opportunities for students who struggle to have a positive experience in a hands-on experiential setting. Um, we also thought that, um, we struggled with how do you not lose the A in STEAM? And again, like Brandon said, um, we do a lot of great things and how, but how do we communicate and provide opportu- oh, how do we help parents? Sorry, I got, I highlighted the wrong one. How do we help parents at the secondary level, um, understand and know what's going on in STEAM so that they can help their children make the appropriate decisions and follow the right path? Or the path that's right for them?
So our first, our first point was just that we were kind of in awe. We had a really great, diverse group that had, was able to represent the elementary school, special ed, students, family members, community members, board members, and just how many incredible opportunities we have in our district. And I think Kyle was really great in pointing out that he's had opportunities in other schools and seeing that we have a lot of things that other schools don't have, such as math teams and all that we do with our outdoor learning. And so that was a kind of a really great thing to just realize how many wonderful things we have. The one thing we'd like to see more of as a group is we talked about more aquaculture in general and learning more about lobstering and, and, um, oyster farming, kelp farming, and, and kind of expanding to more of, to more what we're seeing with our community members and what we have, you know, our families and our community members doing every day.
Continue the administrator trend of reporting out. And to make up for the groups who had three, we came down with one. So we spent a lot of our conversation talking about how the STEAM work is an excellent way to also focus on the college and career ready piece, and that we need to build a stronger transition for students from leaving school to entering either, you know, a higher field of study or into the workforce and building great connections with area businesses and employers to find out what skills and strengths students need so that we can position them to really, um, take off once they leave our, our district. Cover what we talked about.
Thank you so much, everybody, um, for these great discussions. I know that I, I got probably six new ideas that I need to think about tomorrow from our group, so that's really exciting. So as promised, um, the administrators and the board will look through all the notes really carefully and make sure that at a future meeting, we report out on our thoughts on some of them and, um, some possible next steps as well that we might want to act on. So thank you for your time. Thank you for your ideas, um, and thank you, um, for coming tonight. Yes?
I have to say thank you to the school, RSU One, for actually having this discussion, and for actually making a focus for our kids. I'm really grateful.
Right, thank you. Anything else? All right, thank you for coming.
I, I need the board members back at least, so we can adjourn the meeting. Okay, thank, I, I, while everyone is talking, I'll talk over everyone. Um, I do want to, I also want to thank everyone for, uh, for coming tonight, and we're, we're hopeful that everyone gained something from this. It's something that's going to work for us going forward. And like I said, we will hold other workshops during the year. Topics to be determined. If you have issues, concerns, things that you would like to discuss as, and in this kind of format, please let Patrick know, let me know, let other board members know, and, and we will consider, uh, those going forward. Okay? Thank you. I still need a quorum. Let's see, I gotta check the list here. So we have a motion, uh, a motion by, by Jen, a second by Megan. All in favor? We've adjourned. Thank you. Thanks. Thank you.